This is Paul.
Roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
If you're able, please stand with the ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
If you have a cellphone, iPhone, iPad, iWatch, I think that's about everything you can buy, and I even made sure mine was off this time, so. Yep, you're in good shape. I'll try to remind you to turn it back on at the end of the meeting. Just for me to double sure, okay. Meeting notice, this is Katie.
On November 26, 2019, executive session was held to discuss personnel. On December 4, 2019, executive session was held to discuss real estate.
Motion to approve the cell phone meeting. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Did we do minutes with that also? Yes, okay. Invitation for the audience, I don't have anyone signed up.
You need to do it, your honor.
We have to do it.
Yeah. We'll need to.
I thought that was.
We don't. Motion.
Yeah, we don't actually approve the meeting yet. Boy, you're kind of rusty.
I must be. Time for vacation.
I don't know that we did. The meeting notice is we don't necessarily approve, we just give notes and record them in the record.
Okay.
So the minutes themselves, they will need approval.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. I'm just thinking of the egg nogga tone. Invitation for the audience, anybody here who wants to speak? If not, Katie, that goes in with your. Can you hand that to Katie? I'm going to add something real quick. Nancy, would you like to give a report on Jimmy Moore?
Ready? Okay. First off, I want to thank the people in the city of Meadville for their overwhelming support, because without their generosity, the Jimmy Moore party would not have gone off. There were some members of Crawford County, too, but the majority of the checks, and that came from the people in the city of Meadville. And I'd like to show, since we're on live tonight, these are letters of the number of people that sent me checks. It's incredible to me, the letters that I got that are in there, people that were previous recipients, people that just wanted to help, even if it was $5, and some of these were very nice checks. One I got today came from London, and I'm sharing this, because I think this is pretty special. It's, "To dear chairperson, I read about the fundraiser for the Jimmy Moore Fund and the Meadville Tribune online. I hope my donation is of use and arrives in good time. I remember the annual parties very well, having performed with the Areeta Lee dancers for several years when they were held at the ICC. These parties taught me early lessons in sharing and caring. Thank you for your good work and good luck." I think that's pretty incredible, for donation to come all the way from London. So without these people, we couldn't have done the Jimmy Moore. We served 265 children, we had 100 families. Because of the generosity of the people of City Meadville, we were able to give a gift card for the first time to the Leskies, for a $50 gift card, for the people, for each family to have a dinner. Also, thanks to Van Tyle, who discounted one pound box of Daphen's chocolate very well for me, I was able to give each family a box of Daphen's chocolates. We want to thank Voselli's and Domino's for donating half of the pizzas that were served. I want to thank the churches and the volunteers who made, I mean, if you saw these scarves, gloves, and hat sets, the table was overflowing. I've never seen such beautiful handiwork, and these children were walking around, and they were just hamming it up. They loved this so much, so I can't begin to tell you, I had to be there to see it, but it was overwhelming. And I want to thank my volunteers. I take all the people that sign up, and I buy all the gifts, and my husband does anything I tell him that he has to do. And so he is my number-one supporter. He picked up the gifts, he made sure that they weren't stolen outside of my home when they came from Amazon. He deposited money for me, he did anything that I asked. And my good friend Sharon Severo just happens to be in the audience, and I didn't know she was coming tonight, but she was the only other person who came to help me when I was bagging the gifts. She complained a lot about it that night, but then, for the first time, this is the first time she's ever attended the event, she was crying at the event. She said she'd never seen anything like it, and she wants to be involved next year, early on. So, but the day of the event, I got to say, I probably had the best volunteers. I've been involved in this for five years, I've always contributed to it, and always gave to the newspapers that were outside of the post office. This was two years, five years ago, I got involved at the Yelks, because my husband was part of it, three years ago, because they needed someone to get it going again. This year was the best I've ever had for volunteers. When somebody didn't show up, they just kind of melded in and took over, and it was just incredible to watch. They were not self-serving at all, they were there to take care of the event. So I want to give a shout-out to them. The kitchen, we had Jen and Jeremiah Anthony. The church had a couple people that worked at the church, and Jose Concepcion and his wife June, and their two sons, Jose and Jason, and they got two volunteers, Abby and Rich. Those people were incredible that day, followed me around, anything they could do. It was just amazing. We had realtors involved, Kelly Corret from Howard Hanna, our office manager, Sue Miller from Howard Hanna, Christine Brown from Remax, from the city. We had Jenny Steiger, who is our receptionist, who is going to be retiring, and our councilman Jim Rolla helped out throughout the day. Mayor Sterns, thank you for being there and giving this speech on behalf of the city of Meadville. Want to thank CNN Mrs. Claus, which we couldn't do without. And there are some, we had 90 dozen cookies made that day. Susan Kusball, I have to give credit every year, she was a recipient way back. She made 42 dozen cookies herself. Mayor's John made a dozen cookies, Kim Dixon made a dozen, my neighbor Erin Mals, Erin Wells made cookies, many others. Michelle Brown from the Tribune supported us last year and this year, and just is, anything we needed her to do, she was there to do. The firemen, big shout-out to them. Whatever position we needed them, they went, they did it. When we were done, they had those chairs down, those 400 chairs down so fast, it was unbelievable. And St. Agathus and their maintenance men for letting me in every night, after hours, so that we could continue to work on this event. Without the people in the city of Meadville, without these volunteers, we could not have done this event. So thank you, Meadville, for once again, it's a wrap, the party is over, and I think we, and I also wanted to give a big shout, I don't usually give you a shout-out, Mr. Cowley, but.
I didn't write that, I really didn't write that about.
But I thought you, the article that you wrote afterwards truly accented what happened that day at the party. I thought you picked the right people, I don't know how you did it, I saw you that day, but I thought the report you did that is one of the best I've ever seen you do. So thank you for doing that. Thank you, everyone.
Well, I think somebody that really needs to be thanked is you. People don't realize how much time and effort that you yourself put into this. I got just to see a very small part of what you've done. Just getting the gifts were big enough, I remember there were at least a couple vehicle oaths that you worked on, so on behalf of the city, thank you for doing what you did for the Jimmy Moore. And what I really liked about it was, you explained to the individuals in the thing what the Jimmy Moore was really about, and you brought it back to the firemen and that charge, so thank you. Communications, Katie?
Your Honor, I have a letter here from TRC on behalf of Norfolk Southern Railway Company, dated December 2, 2019, notifying the city that they are applying for renewal of their MPDES permit.
What's that mean?
Your guess is good.
Gary Johnson, do you want to briefly explain?
It's a stormwater discharge permit from, it's a federal permit issued by DEP, and just every five years, they have to renew the permit, and they're required to notify the city that they're renewing the permit.
So actually, in this case, this one is an industrial wastewater one?
Okay.
Does that have something to do with all those pest wells?
I suspect. So this, they're required that the law to notify the city when they do a permanent renewal application?
Okay.
Your Honor, I also have a letter here from the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, dated December 5, 2019, alerting the city that our grant application was denied for our, the historical and archival record care grant.
Does that come about often, or do you have any?
It's a yearly grant.
So they can try to afford it again next year?
And they, the commission has encouraged us to apply again next year.
Will they give a reason for denial?
It says we can contact or further our feedback, I don't think we've done that yet. Katie, we have requested up to $5,000 approximately, right, for some scanning equipment and whatnot?
They had stated in the letter, they had received $351,496 in requests, and they only had $150,000 that they could grant, so.
Quite a number. Maybe if you request the denial, they'll remember us next year.
I can do that.
Any other communication?
That is all, your honor.
Thank you. Manager report, Andy?
A few items, your honor. Just planning for next year and the annual organizational meeting of council is now, will be held on January 6 at 10:00 a.m. We will advertise for that coming up here yet, so that'll be, again, Monday, January 6 at 10:00 a.m. Monday, January 6 is the date prescribed by the Third Class City Code for that organizational Staff is proposing only to meet only on January 15 of that month. The first, of course, is a holiday, that would be the first Wednesday. One of the actions at the organizational meeting is council sets its annual meeting schedule, and given the meeting on the 6th and the time that we would need to advertise meetings, I'm proposing that we would have our first meeting on Wednesday, the 15th of the new year. That would provide, then council could set their meeting schedule, we could then advertise, and then that could be our first meeting, so that's what I'm proposing, to be the first public meeting following that organizational meeting, if that's okay with council.
Two of you okay?
It'll be a discussion item that day on the 6th, but that's what I'm proposing, just to give us time to advertise.
Okay.
The other day, I was passing through the lobby, and Jenny and Tracy, Jenny Steiger and Tracy Wilcox were preparing a large mailing, and I just sort of inquired what they were up to, and they were mailing delinquent real estate tax bills for, this was the county portion, and so I just inquired about some numbers, and really just as a sort of educational point, there are four, in 2019, there were 4,739 real estate tax accounts in the city of Meadville, and of course, they're billed with sort of city and county taxes earlier in the year, and then school taxes later. There were 745 delinquent accounts of city-county tax delinquents of 16%. I don't know what those are in terms of dollars, I just, it was just a number of counts. So 745 equals 16% were delinquent, and notice this sent out, and then for the school tax that just went out a week or so ago, was 652 accounts, which is about 14%. Just thought I'd share that information since I had, thought it was interesting. A reminder in terms of holiday schedule, the city building will be closed on Tuesday, December 24th, Christmas Eve holiday, and Christmas Day, December 25th, and on New Year's Day, Wednesday, January 1st. Today, Gary Johnson and I attended, along with Ashley Porter, a meeting up at Allegheny College on the campus. Council recall, on the heels of pedestrian fatality, I believe in 2015, in the fall of 2015, there was planning then conducted in the fall of '16, and then with the final report, there was a, there were some public meetings held about sort of a menu of options that might be done in the North Main Street corridor through campus of traffic calming pedestrian safety. The college is beginning to revisit that project, and we had sort of a kickoff meeting today to talk about sort of what next steps would be planning, public meetings, there's a, at least a plan for at least one public meeting, looking for funding sources, so we held that project kickoff meeting today on campus with a few stakeholders. There will be more information to come to council as that evolves, but I think in the new year, we'll see more activity and planning around improvements in the North Main Street corridor. I'd like to report that Jenny Steiger, our receptionist, I'll say Jenny, but the city won the 2019 Best Lobby Area Display, and we give all, a lot of that credit in lobby too. Debbie does outside, Jenny does inside, but won the award from the Chamber of Commerce, and this would be, we, Jenny won it in 2018, and then I guess we didn't win in 2017, but there's a 2016 award as well, but I thank Jenny for her efforts, it's sort of fun staff building activity, and lots of people contribute, but I thank Jenny for those efforts, it was sort of a fun thing to do. Lastly, I'll report that tomorrow, council took action earlier this year, probably late summer in fact, to, on an assignment, so the, for the DEP building, the redevelopment authority had been the owner, and leased that building to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. Tomorrow, the Department of General Services will actually act on the assignment to assign that lease from the redevelopment authority to the city, and the action that the city took and the redevelopment authority early this year, will then, once that happens, then we can file the deed and do the transfer from the redevelopment authority to the city. So I expect by year-end, the city will be the owner of the, of record of the DEP building. And as council is also aware, because we've talked about the borrowing needed for it, the HVAC replacement project and the roof replacement project, are hot and heading underway, bids will be advertised here, we're shooting for December 23rd, for bids to be due on January 10th. So in fact, at our very first meeting on the 15th, it's possible that we could be awarding bids to the little bidder for the HVAC replacement project. That will, there's a long lead time on equipment ordering, and so that's the rush to award the contract as soon as practical, so that we can pull the trigger on, the contractor can pull the trigger on ordering the equipment, and then the long lead time for manufacturing, with the hope by around May, early May, that we're replacing the HVAC system before the heating system, before the cooling season. And that's all I have, your honor.
Harrisburg is pleased with that, I would hope.
Yeah, I think we've had good communication with the department, with the Department of General Services, a lot of cooperation and planning, and we, I think we made several positive changes at the building that are, have been good.
Do we, Ashley the lead engineer there?
So CJL, actually, they have the Erie Office, but they're in Pittsburgh, and Johnstown is the lead on the HVAC. Ashley's at the table reviewing on our behalf, so he is a liaison and has reviewed and made recommendations along the way, but they're the lead design engineer for the HVAC system. And they've been, they've been very nice to work with, actually, they've been a great company.
Well, that's a lot more complicated than most people think.
Yeah. And a lot has changed, right? I mean, items of technology and equipment in the 25 years since it was installed, so there's, yep. That's all, your honor.
Under old business, the third and final reading of adopting the 2020 budget.
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, adopting and establishing a budget for all funds of the city of Meadville for the year 2020, including the general fund, capital improvement program fund, liquid fuels program fund, stormwater management program fund, special revenue funds, appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the various programs and funds of the city of Meadville for 2020, and establishing authorized maximum personnel compliments for certain departments of the city of Meadville for 2020.
Motion?
So moved.
Second, your honor. Second, discussion. I get a couple questions right off the bat. So with the bond refinancing, we met the number that we were given?
We exceeded it.
Good deal. How much?
So in 2020, we will have $327,000, and in 2021, we will have $103,000. It was structured to 327 this year, and 103, I mean, 2020, then 2021. So in 2021's budget, we'll have 103 to start with.
Okay, but that's still taking money out of the one time?
Yes, if, when you, when you look at the, on the final page.
We did, so with the budget adjustments attached to the ordinance, is a summary, just a review, so just to, just to remind council that we started the budget with 600, preliminary budget of $656,048 out of balance.
Okay.
It was, yes, paperclip to the ordinance, sorry. I'll wait till you all find it.
You're too far, though. What did you do to your packet?
I tore it all apart. I'm like a three-year-old when I come to a packet. Yeah, I can. Thank you.
So we started $656,048 out of balance, we'll see the adjustments there, reduce complement, a reduced, reduced one and a half positions in the public works department, wage adjustments from preliminary estimates downwardly revised by $18,000, workers' comp renewal savings of $15,000, actually about an equal renewal, but we had budgeted an increase that didn't come to fruition. The healthcare savings by the proposed, the move from Highmark to UPMC of $156,710, and then you'll see the bond refinance. On first and second reading of the budget ordinance, we had that number as $300,000. We've revised to 327 in this budget, which then reduces, on the revenue side, the transfer from the rate stabilization, we've reduced that from what it was 97, approximately $97,000 to the $70,000 there. As Debbie explained, there will be additional savings we can take in next year's, the remaining $103,000, we can take in next year's budget and reduce that service, to achieve a zero
Any questions from council? Roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Boards and appointments, I made a comment at our last meeting that we probably won't be making any appointments until after the first of the year. I did not know that a letter went out, and we got a number of responses back for those who were already serving on the board, like to be reappointed. What's council's flavor, do you want to take care of it tonight, or you want it to go first year?
We can do it now, what, you want to have it separately, or?
Some of them you're going to have to do separately, yes.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So council, in your pack, I'll just orient you to it, though, so the top, so we, in anticipation of the January 1 renewals, city clerk's office sent notification to the renewal individuals and asked if they were interested in continuing to serve. So the top block is everyone that responded affirmatively, the middle, the middle block are folks who have not responded yet, and then you'll see the bottom are vacancies that need to be filled.
The reason I said about dividing it down, because there's one that I have to excuse myself on.
Okay.
So if you want to take the beautification committee, because that's just one big one up there, which is Joe Galvo, Josh Sheridan, Victoria Soft, Zach Norwood, and Debbie Okowski.
And Anna Mack.
And Anna Mack.
Right.
They're all one-year terms.
Motion, your honor.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Civil Service Board, Ty Cressman.
I'll approve, your honor.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. I'm going to excuse my, or.
We'll do this in two steps.
Okay.
Okay.
You want to do John first?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint John Fulmer to a five-year term to the.
So moved.
Market Authority.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
I'll second. Then we have two other ones for the Market Authority, which is Lois Curtin for a five-year term, and also Elizabeth Ozak, Ozarak, for a five-year.
Also moved.
So moved, your honor, second, your honor.
Okay, roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. We have the Meadville Area Water Authority, Mark Gilde, five-year term.
I'll approve, your honor.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Planning and zoning commission, there are actually two, and there's, but let's do those two first. Somebody make a motion to appoint.
So moved.
And then we're going to do the third, because.
Motion to approve, Michelle Holman and Jim Maugh.
I already did it.
Second. Okay, roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Street Committee, Jim Maugh.
Jimmy Alley.
From Alley. Five-year. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Zoning hearing board, we have one appointment, Andy.
McCollum.
McCollum, it's a three-year.
So moved.
Second, your honor.
Roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. And then we have one other, Planning and Zoning Commission, it's a four-year term, and I'd like, and John Bataglia asks if we'd consider him.
Well, you can't do that until next month.
Why not?
Because I'm still on council.
Yeah, but by the time you.
Oh, well, you know what? Planning zoning does not require, I think, I'm pretty sure that can be council member.
Not zoning hearing board.
Hmm? Not zoning hearing, planning.
Okay.
I'll move to appoint.
Are we okay, Gary?
John Bataglia?
Wait, this is not for the zoning hearing board, correct?
No, this is for the planning.
Planning and zoning commission. That's correct.
For a term beginning January 1, 2020.
So moved.
Second, we're, you, you need a second?
Second.
Oh, you got it, Sean?
Yep.
Okay.
He's pretty shifty, though.
Wait, this is not for the zoning hearing board, correct?
No, this is for the planning and zoning commission.
That's correct.
For a term beginning January 1st, 2020.
So moved.
Second, we're, you, you're gonna need a second? Oh, second? Oh, you got it, Sean?
Yep.
Okay.
He's pretty shifty, though.
Rowa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
I think I better recuse.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Uh, Sterns?
Aye. And I believe that's it, because the other ones have not responded back at this point. Am I correct?
Correct.
Under new business, Meadville Area Recreation Complex Loan Proposal. Oh, is that what that is? It's a discussion, I guess.
Yeah, Your Honor, this is just continued discussion from prior, one or two prior readings on a proposed possible loan to, from the city to the Meadville Recreation Authority for roof replacement of the locker rooms at that facility. And I'll let Debbie take it from here.
When I was looking through it, I, I guess I opted to take the current loan and add the additional loan to make one new loan. And that loan would be $108,91. And when I was looking at the payments, I tried to get something that I really thought they could afford to pay, and that came out to be $2,900 twice a year. It's about a $500 increase from what they pay now. Now, it obviously has increased the loan considerably in order for them to complete that project. They will structure it just like the prior one we have now. I've talked in great length with Dick Astor about it and Aaron in regards to it. You know, they certainly appreciate it if the city were willing to, to do this additional loan. I did express to them if, you know, if, God forbid, they were ever to default, we would literally just withhold our contribution to guarantee our repayment. And they, you know, their meeting is Friday. We'll talk in more detail on it, but...
What's the maximum loan amount?
It's a, it's $108,91, $108,91,000.
So it's a thirty, approximately $31,000 balance on the current pool loan, full liner replacement project, and then a additional fund of $70,000 for...
They have bids on that or quotes?
They do, they do. When they did their, when they got their grant, it was all...
Oh, oh, oh.
The roof was included in that. Big process, but that part wasn't covered.
Was it still good?
I believe so, yes.
Have the other two entities been approached about...
They have not, they have not. It would, it's not impossible, but to do a multi, it would be kinda complicated to do a multi, as opposed to just us doing it.
Vernon increased their contribution, is she correct?
Correct, they did. Which would more than cover this, this additional money that they're paying.
Yeah, Vernon has already, but Westmead has not...
I haven't, I don't know if they have. I haven't, I haven't heard that. Perhaps I will learn that on Friday.
So we, we went from 1% to 1.5%?
It was 1.5%, I'm sorry. I looked in the docs, and it was.
Oh, okay.
So the existing pool liner loan is off of 1.5%.
Okay, is that...
Gary, can you just make sure the documentation and everything is done correctly? I'd appreciate that.
Yes.
Make sure it's...
So that would be, we would prepare a new note to basically re-fi the existing debt for this new principal balance. It would be a 20-year term. The prior one was a 10-year term. We can go with the 1.5% interest rate, if that's council's pleasure. We also did a security agreement last time and filed the UCC on the business assets of the mark, just in case.
You gotta protect tax-earned money. It's gonna be ours anyway.
We're essentially backing it up anyway.
Right.
But make sure the document's done.
So if council is amenable to this approach, I assume we would tee it up for the January 15th meeting then? For actual, you want a note of mortgage, is that...
I can talk to them on, on Friday.
Well, we're not voting on it tonight. This is just a discussion, so that'll be on the agenda. So the new council will have an opportunity to ask questions. Correct? I mean, we're not voting on this tonight, right?
No.
Just discussion?
New council?
I don't think it's a question. Yeah, I mean... You don't think they could go to 2.5%? I mean, we're borrowing money now somewhere around 2.5%.
I could, I could run the figures. I was trying to model it to where they currently were.
But you increased the term to...
Yep, I did.
Twofold, so I think Jim has a good point.
The prior note was based again off of 1% over what the city was receiving at the time on our one-year CDs, was how we came up with that interest rate back in 2015.
And we're backing this up through the general, or capital? And how are we backing this?
Long-term capital.
Long-term capital reserve.
It won't affect the John Fund.
Okay.
At all.
There's absolutely no risk. So, you know, comfortable with it.
Well, I'm pretty comfortable that they're gonna continue on. They're, they're, they're going in the right direction.
They are.
If they weren't going in the right direction, I wouldn't be so gung-ho about it, but they are.
I don't think that's what Jim's saying. I think he's saying if we're borrowing at 2.5%, what? Isn't that your point?
That's the point. I mean, it's not necessarily a deal breaker, it's just that...
Something you should note, anyway.
It would add a few hundred dollars a year. A thousand dollars a year in the initial years, declining after that.
I mean, they're, they're very grateful, so I'm, I'm sure that if that's what the council wanted to do, they certainly would, would be also happy with that.
Is there any other major, I know they're looking, what, at a new ice machine? Are they getting grant money for that?
They have donations already from the Penguins, a $50,000 donation. If I recall, it's like $125,000 for a new ice machine. They have 50-plus, and there's other donations set aside for that. They, they've raised all the money for that, because their ice machines, I literally, I mean, again, after, you know, doing the ice and spending all that money on the chillers, certainly wouldn't want to have your ice machine in hockey season go awry. So yes, they are planning, and I believe they even ordered it.
You know, if the other two partners would decide to kick in with that, I'd like to know that, just so...
Sure.
We know they're, they may do something like that, you know, to help, so... It's teamwork with the three of us. Okay. Any other questions from council?
So thank you for putting this together.
Any questions on that, since it's gonna be in front of you?
So absent final interest rate, are consents from council then to tee this up for the January 15th meeting then?
I'm okay with it, yeah. Okay. Anything else on that? Levying taxes for 2020. Resolution.
Sure.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas the Council of the City of Meadville passed on Third and Final Ordinance, Ordinance Number 3,781 of 2019, adopting the 2020 budget for the City of Meadville on December 18th, 2019, and whereas that a tax be and the same is hereby levied upon all real and personal property within the City of Meadville subject to taxation for city purposes for the calendar year of 2020 as follows. A, general revenue, a tax for general revenue purposes in the sum of 7.72 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation, the sum of 77.20 cents on each $100 of real estate assessed valuation. B, debt retirement, a tax for debt retirement purposes in the sum of 9.32 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation, the sum of 93.20 cents on each $100 of real estate assessed valuation. C, capital improvements, a tax for capital improvements in the sum of 0 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation, the sum of 0 cents on each $100 of real estate assessed valuation. D, recreation and parks, a tax to maintain, operate, and finance recreation and parks in the sum of 4.78 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation, the sum of 47.80 cents on each $100 of real estate assessed valuation. Shade trees, a tax to prune, feed, maintain, plant, and remove shade trees throughout the City of Meadville in the sum of .10 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation, the sum of 1.00 cents on each $100 of real estate assessed valuation. And whereas, the total for all purposes being 21.19 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation, or the sum $2.19 and 2/10 cents on each $100 of real estate assessed valuation, if and to the extent that any tax separately stated above exceeds the authority of the city to levy, or to separately state in any such item, any such separately stated tax or any excess of any such separately stated tax shall be, shall be deemed to be and hereby is levied as a tax for general revenue purposes and shall be added to and included in the tax here and above stated as a tax levied for general revenue purposes. And whereas, that a residence tax for general revenue purposes of the City of Meadville be and the same is hereby levied on all inhabitants of the city of the age of 18 years and over in the sum of $5, and whereas, all taxpayers subject to the payment of taxes assessed pursuant to the terms of this resolution shall be entitled to a discount of 2 per centum from the amount of such tax upon making payment of the whole amount thereof within two months after the date of the tax notice issued pursuant to law. All taxpayers who shall fail to make payment of such taxes charged against them for four months after the date of said tax notice shall be charged a penalty of 10 per centum, which penalty shall be added to the taxes by the tax collector and shall be collected by him. And whereas, should any section, part of any section, levy, part or provision of this resolution be declared by appropriate authority to be unlawful or unconstitutional, all other terms, conditions, levies, provisions, and parts hereof shall be, continue in full force in effect as if the matter declared to be unlawful or unconstitutional had been admitted as of the date of the final enactment hereof. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that these tax rates shall take effect on January 1st, 2020, and be it further resolved that all prior ordinance and parts of ordinances or any resolution or part of resolution inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed.
You did a great job of reading all that. Good job. Short version.
It exists.
That is a short version.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Rowa, oh, sorry.
Hey, listen, that's all right. We're working together on this tonight.
That's all right. $5 is the maximum we can charge for the per capita.
It is.
How do we determine residents? How do we go about, I mean, like, if people move to Meadville and change their voting registration to here, they're residents, are they not? And so they would be subject to the $5 per capita tax.
If they live here.
How do you, I mean, registering to vote means you live here.
Yeah, so I will say, I, I'm not directly familiar with how the per capita tax rules are generated and repopulated with that data set. I know we have per capita tax. Assessors. Assessors, thank you, I come up with the word, that review and visit, make phone calls and visits and knock on doors to update those lists and refresh them regularly. Jane Smith, Jane and, Jean. Is it just, is it just Jean that does it, or are they both, they both go? Are here regularly reviewing records and making phone calls?
Just Harman.
Yeah, Harman.
Different part of the city.
Harman.
Yeah, and Harman.
He's still there?
Doesn't.
Yep. I, I can look into that, Jim, in terms of how those records are maintained and refreshed, but I don't, can't direct, address it directly.
Thank you.
Any discussion? John, Sean? Roll call.
Rowa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Resolution authorizing signatures for investment advisory agreement, the fireman's pension plan.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too, as and for a binding and effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, controller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement and the manner required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
Discussion?
Is this a temporary thing, or...?
So, yeah, I'll give you some context. So we, council, back in 2000, we have three separate pension plans, and we have three separate fund agreements, management agreements, with essentially they're set up as three-party agreements. The city, the respective pension board, and CS McKee, who is our fund advisor.
All McKee?
All three are CS McKee, yeah. So council, so there is a sample of that management, so 2003. We've been in a relationship and an agreement with CS McKee since 2003. A sample of that is in your, of one of them is in your packet. All three agreements are the same, so we only provided one sample. And council be aware that for a number of months, starting in the budget season, we've been talking about, you need to go out to the market and see RFPs for new, for pension fund management, that we wanted to see what was out there and see if we could do a little better. While we were doing that, we were informed, probably a month ago now, six weeks ago, four or six weeks ago, that CS McKee was in the process of selling to the CSM Advisors, which is listed in this agreement. CSM Advisors LLC, which is an affiliate of North Square Investments LLC and based in Chicago. And so, John, to your question, what we're doing is assigning our current management agreement with CS McKee to this new buyer. We're still going through that RFP process.
I presume they'll be submitting a RFP?
They, yes, in fact, they have. So, and I had that list, and what was, what might, we had 24 proposals requested, eight returned.
Eight returned.
So our pension attorney will take the first review of those, and will make recommendations for a series of interviews in the new year. So essentially, this is likely a temporary arrangement until we enter into either a new contract or, or start a relationship with a new firm.
It's necessary so they can manage our money in the interim.
So there's three actions on here, one for each pension plan. The, each respective pension board has met, we met last Thursday. CS McKee was present, sort of explained the history and the context of the sale. It was a good meeting, and talked about the, sort of the qualifications of the new company and why they chose to sell and sort of the strategy behind that to, frankly, I think to better serve their existing clients and to provide more resources and other products. And at that meeting, each pension board did vote to enter into this agreement and to also recommend to council to do the same. It's a unique situation in our pension ordinances that technically the pension boards have the authority to enter into these agreements, but we administer them at a city staff level. There's a lot of savings to be had by each of the pension boards using the same investment firm. So that's why these are structured, the rules are structured as a three-party agreement between the city itself, the respective pension board, and then the contractor.
Each pension board, if they so desire, could go on their own, right?
Legally, they could. And so for this RFP process, what they've done is each pension board has identified two participants to sit on a review committee. They recognize the efficiency and savings of having that firm, and so our goal will be in the RFP review process to have a committee of, for, for each of the pension boards to interview firms and come up with a recommendation.
Any other questions for Andy? So we do these each individually, correct?
Yeah, we should.
Okay. So we already have a motion, a second, for the fire pension, correct?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Rowa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Resolution authorizing the signature of the investment for the police pension fund.
So moved, Your Honor.
Does she need to read it?
No.
Do you have it?
Gary, do I need to read it? It's the same as the other one.
Can we stipulate that it's read?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call.
Did I, I'm sorry, did we have a first and a...
I was checking first.
Okay. And who was your second?
Sorry. Roll call.
Rowa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Resolution authorizing the investment agreement for the city employees' pension.
We've got to do the police next, right?
We just did.
We just did.
Did we do firing?
Yeah.
All right, so moved.
Second, Your Honor.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Rowa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Resolution authorizing the signature of the collecting bargaining agreement for 2020 through 2022.
Resolved by the council of the city of Needville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too, as and for a binding and effective agreement of the city of Needville and accord with its terms and subject to ratification by the International Association of Firefighters, Local 515, and final approval by city solicitor. And the mayor, controller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement and the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion, please.
Motion approved, Your Honor.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion, Andy.
Counsel, the current collective bargaining agreement with the, with the firefighters' union expires December 31st of this year. In your packet, I've given you the whole agreement, in your packet, that was a summary. It is structured as a, as a result of negotiations that have been ongoing sincerely followed. And these changes don't represent many, this isn't a wholesale new directional change. We had very cooperative discussions. But I'll detail the summary of the changes in this proposed contract. So, it's a four-year agreement beginning January 1st, 2020, through December 31st, 2023. Wage increases, as you see in the summary, 2020 of 2.25%, and then 2.5% each year thereafter through the end of the contract. Healthcare premium contributions rise to 11% in 2020. That makes actually all three, all three unions contributing the same. That rise to 12% in '21, 12% again in 2022, and in the final, fourth and final year of the contract, rise to 14%. This just represents an increasing commitment and sort of skinning the game from our employees in terms of healthcare contributions, and that is definitely helpful to the city. Under sick leave provisions, sick leave doesn't change in terms of their accumulation. There's just a proposal here that would allow, actually similar to other, I think both other collective bargaining units and non-represented employees, an option to convert unused sick time after they've reached a cap of 1,296 hours. They would have the ability to convert up to, and convert two days to one vacation day up to a total of three days. It would be used as bonus days. That doesn't, the way they are required to schedule under other regulations in the contract that does not drive overtime, they can't use vacation days to cause overtime. So, it's, doesn't directly impact the bottom line in terms of forcing and increasing overtime costs. Under bereavement leave, we make some changes just to make consistent, among all three bargaining agreements, who is, what the, for which individual family members are, bereavement leave is allowed. You'll see that detailed there. We eliminate reference, there's, there had been a premium pay for EMS, EMT. Actually, all, all of our firefighters are EMTs. And so, now that goes, is actually included in the base wage, essentially. So, we eliminate reference in the contract to that. We do a lot of cleanup here. I have seven and eight in, in the contract, is an opportunity to just cleaning up and get your current Family Medical Leave Act. There's sort of a lot of old language with respect to various forms of leave and approval by the Crawford County Medical Society and things, and just really outdated language that we've now refreshed with current FMLA language. Also similar, that's number eight, the Heart and Lung Act, which governs uniformed employees and public employees in terms of essentially injury in line of duty. And so, we make appropriate and current reference to the Heart and Lung Act. In post-retirement healthcare, we add, there are pace income or income limits so that if a retiree earns and, and his spouse and, we've, we've added the spouse's income into calculating. So, a retiring spouse or surviving spouse earn over a certain income level, they're required to reimburse the city a portion of their post-retirement healthcare benefits per, per his schedule. So, that's by adding the spouse's income so that we helps to control some costs as well. And then you'll see here residency, a change. Right now, I don't have the current language in front of me, but of the 12 members, I think right now, six can live outside of the city. Collecting bargaining agreement, the proposed here is in 2020, seven members could live outside, but within a 15-mile radius. 2021 would allow eight members to live outside, 2022 would allow nine members to live outside, and 2023, the final year, all members could live outside, but within that 15-mile radius. I know this is a tough issue for counsel in terms of residency, but this is consistent now also with ASME and our FOP contracts in terms of residency for unionized employees.
Andy, does the contract prescribe how they determine which members, is it senior-based?
Yeah, and so, the language is essentially seniority-based. It says it's monitored by the, by the union itself, is the basic language. So, they, they place themselves and report to management. Now, we have payroll records, and we know what those records are, but they essentially place and control it. So, it might not necessarily be by seniority, but.
So, there won't be any blowback to us if someone says, I should have gone in the position and didn't?
No, they're required to administer amongst themselves. And so, any, any fighting there would be, would be a fighting.
The bargaining unit is already okay, just?
They have, in fact, yeah. So, they did, in fact, vote on it earlier this month. And we've been meeting, as reason as last week, and I think actually their legal counsel reviewed it just yesterday, had some very minor tweaks that are not substantive changes. And so, they have, in fact, already acted on it to approve it substantially in the form here. The resolution is structured that they would have to actually sign it first before counsel would.
Well, that's what our policy is.
So, your resolution structured that, but I, they've already approved it, so I anticipate getting signatures in short order.
So, they haven't signed it yet, so we'd be signing it before they do, correct?
No, you're, you're signing it, the language in the resolution is that your only subject signing conditioned essentially upon them signing first.
Okay. It sounds like you guys really work well at it, and seems like it was a.
How long does it last?
Four years. Four years. Well, I think everybody should be thanked for working on it, team, and coming up.
It's a good faith effort.
Yes, it is. So, with that, any other questions from counsel? Roll call.
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Botaglia.
Aye.
Angela Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye.
Okay, so that, sums that all up. I am getting back in order, you can have them back. So, now we're going to do a resolution authorizing signatures for amendment Miranda of understanding between the city and Angelo Navarro. Am I saying that correctly?
Yep, Navarro. Your Honor, report, Katie reads that resolution, just as quick context. This is a new item on your agenda ballot, that, that was in the draft prior. I think I did form counsel just over the last couple of days that this would have been coming forward. But once Katie reads the resolution and you authorize discussion, then I'll provide context here.
Okay.
Resolved by the council of the city of Needville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too, as and for a binding and effective agreement of the city of Needville and accord with its terms and subject to the signatures of Angelo Navarro and Joseph P. LaBruso II, and upon final approval, a city solicitor. And the mayor, controller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement and the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion, please.
No move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, go ahead.
So, counsel, this story begins on August 10th of this past summer on a late-night incident on Chestnut Street, outside of Chestnut, from a brawl essentially that started inside 251 Chestnut Street and spilled over onto the sidewalk after closing hours. Required very large and significant police response from our department and outside departments in support and mutual aid. Resultant injury of an officer who sliced a pendant and, from a storefront window that was broken as part of that. Following that incident, right, we took that very seriously. There had been a number of police responses to this address over the prior years. City staff and their police department met with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, conferred with them, the Pennsylvania State Police Bureau of Liquor Control Enforcement, which is really the enforcement arm of liquor law, met with the bar owners or the, Gary will get into details of sort of the proposed transfer of the license, and it gets, gets a little tricky. Ultimately, the agreement before you, though, I think is, is a, sets forth a number of conditions. It's a memorandum of understanding between the city of Needville and the owners' operators of the bar that has a number of conditions that I think are very favorable. And probably are better, is a better result than we might get through the enforcement process, that having these conditions in an agreement now gives us a sort of light to stand on and to communicate in a sort of benchmark to hold the business accountable to. And so, with that, I'm going to have Gary sort of talk a little bit further, the context, and then the structure of this agreement.
Counsel, this could be viewed as a mid-trial settlement. We've already participated with PLCB in a full day of hearings regarding a number of violations that the PLCB brought with the city's support against this entity related to this liquor license. There would be at least another full day of hearings if, if we were to move forward. The net result of this memorandum of understanding, though, is that the city is achieving the restrictions and the conditions on this licensee that ultimately we would have hopefully gained if we had won in that hearing process. The, and that's a very favorable outcome for the city. Right now, the PLCB has held up the transfer of that liquor license, right? So, you have interested parties, including Mr. LaBruso, Ms. Navarro, and the entity Chestnut Street Pub and Grill, which were attempting to transfer the license because of the ongoing notice of violations and citations that was being held up. This would allow that transfer to move forward, subject to these conditions, which, which really do promote a more favorable environment in the city as it relates to Chestnut Street and this entity. The restrictions and conditions which they've agreed on, I, I won't touch on all of them, but they involve employee training, they involve limited hours of operation. They have willingly agreed to stop serving alcohol Sunday through Thursdays at 10:30 at night and actually close the establishment at 11:00 PM. On Fridays and Saturdays, they've agreed to stop selling alcohol at 11:30 at night and actually close the bar at midnight, which is obviously much earlier than they need to. They're going to be implementing a scan ID system, right, to track who was coming in and out of the establishment. They've already changed a number of things at the request of the city police department, including making, taking out signage that was blocking view from outside into the establishment by law enforcement. They've added additional lighting, they're adding additional security cameras. They've agreed to have security on-site, one officer per 50 patrons. They've agreed to quarterly meetings ongoing with the city police department. They've agreed to allow the city to have access to the security footage, even for events that don't arise out of their establishment. So, they're really attempting to be a good neighbor, in our opinion, with the, with the agreement of these conditions. Obviously, they want to be able to transfer the liquor license, so that's their interest. But this is what we would have hoped for had we continued with the contested hearings that we were having.
So, did we, I mean, they've given a lot. I, with the, the last call was what, 1:30, bar closes at 2:00 unless you're private, if I remember correctly when I had the license. So, did we talk to the neighbors? Are the neighbors aware of the length that we went to this to make sure that they're in a safe environment down there? I mean, have they, you know, the neighbors that were calling me at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, were they made aware of this now?
The neighbors were aware that we were getting to this stage, right?
Okay.
And we will make them aware of where it stands now. But they were aware through the last hearing stage that we were attempting to achieve conditions like this.
Okay, so they kind of knew the conditions that we were looking at, then?
This is really the first public action of, of the contents of this agreement.
Right, they're not aware of specific.
The actual terms that we've just discussed or covered here have not been publicly shared with, with neighbors.
Right.
Gary, I have a question on page five of six. And it might just be that somebody missed it, but if you're closing the bar at midnight, why would you have no amplified music to replay between 2:00 and 7:00?
We'll fix that. Thank you.
I like the other one.
The other addition to the version you have in your packet is modification. Mr. LaBruso has signed as president of Chestnut Street Pub and Grill. We've also asked him to sign individually. So, there is a new signature page, which just, just came out about an hour before the meeting.
And actually, both parties, all parties have executed this already. So, by now, prior to the meeting, we are the last, and they have executed, yes.
So, once we sign this, then, what is it, 30 days, the liquor license can be transferred? Or would it be transferred immediately?
Like they're going to shut down.
That's going to be up to, to the PLCB.
Okay, so they're going to, that's their call.
PLCB is very aware of this agreement. They've been involved in all the discussions, but that will be between them and PLCB.
What's a, is there a background requirement for license holders?
I don't know what qualifications.
I mean, convicted felons can't vote or cut hair, but they can own a bar, sell alcohol.
You can't have a DUI and own a bar.
Yeah, I can't remember what the regulations are. Next one was in 10 years.
I just know that one.
I, I can't remember what. Jim, you remember Conny at Lake?
Yeah, we had, we had background checks.
I thought we did.
Yeah.
I thought they had to do background on me.
They're actually, if counsel were to approve this, at the time of the transfer, Ms. Navarro, who would be the new licensee, is actually going to close that location for 30 days to renovate it, rebrand it, so it opens as an entirely new bar.
I mean, you know, they've, they've really impressed me with the agreements. I mean, you're closing at midnight on a Saturday when, you know.
I was wondering about Navarro, it's the people that own the Mexican restaurant, Padres now, it's Mrs., so I'm assuming that you can't own two liquor licenses, or you can? Because I mean, I was wondering if the other one told me by this.
You can own more than one.
Okay.
You have more than one.
Yeah. Because it's Mrs. Navarro on all these papers. That's correct. And I'm really impressed with the closing.
Oh, yeah.
We were saying, I, that's, I was, when they, this, when they showed me this, I thought, you know, if you could get all the bars to close at midnight, you probably could get rid of five or six police officers. That's when all the trouble happens, after midnight. But. If things are going well there, I wouldn't be surprised if in the future they come back to the city and PLCB looking to expand that. But for now, it's definitely a sign of, of good faith by them. And, and we believe it's what we would have achieved had we won, had the PLCB won at the hearings.
And Gary, there's no term to this agreement, right?
No, it's a death.
So, essentially, these, these conditions, if, if they're to change, we would presumably be petitioned by the license holder to, to consider changes to this agreement, at which point we can revisit with counsel based on performance, et cetera. But there is no direct term to this agreement, so any changes to this would have to be renegotiated. This is, I, I want to applaud our police department, Gary's office, Elizabeth Spattiford's office, who took the lead. There was a lot of work to get to this, and this is a good faith effort by the business owner, but a lot of work on the city's end to get to this, and I, and I applaud our staff and our team to get here. And this is, this is a recommend, you know, the, the police department recommends. I was very pleased with this agreement, and frankly, since we've had these ongoing discussions, there, I believe that there haven't been any incidents at the bar that they've had to respond to in a number of months now.
I didn't get any calls in real the nightly, Roy, so.
Actually, Andy and I both drove down when they blew the windows out. So, yeah, I'm hoping that that, I, I, it's a good faith effort, and I'm glad that the PLCB was involved because that gives them a tool also. And, you know, I, I think they're going to be good neighbors. I think everything should be fine.
Well, the big thing is, you're not going to shut a business down. You'll have a business employing people, but at the same time, you're looking out for individual rights as far as being a nuisance bar or a danger.
And Your Honor, I've asked Gary's office to follow up. Once counsel approves this tonight, that I want to, we will communicate to all the neighbors who participate and provide statements to, to make sure they understand the action that was taken. We'll do a summary of the agreement so that they'll be directly informed of these conditions.
That'll be great. I think that'll ease some tension down there, too. Good job. Thank you, guys. Yeah, we have one, we have a second. Any other questions from counsel? Roll call.
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Botaglia.
No.
Angela Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Resolution setting the 2020 stormwater ERU rate fees.
Resolved by the council of the city of Needville that whereas ordinance number 3707 of 2012, an ordinance of the city of Needville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, establishing a user fee to support the stormwater management system was passed and enacted on October 3rd, 2012. And whereas the ordinance designates and defines equivalent residential unit, ERU, as a measure of impervious ground cover for a typical single-family detached residential property used in assessing the fees for each parcel of developed property, and which has been determined to be 2,660 square feet. And whereas pursuant to section five of the ordinance, the charge per ERU was set at $90 per program year from November 1st, 2012, through December 31st, 2015. And each January 1st thereafter, the charge per ERU is to be adjusted annually as determined by the council of the city of Needville. And whereas the council of the city of Needville has determined that the new fee, beginning January 1st, 2020, shall remain the same, $90 per ERU for the calendar year 2020. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Needville that the user fee to support the stormwater management system for the calendar year 2020 shall remain at the current fee of $90 per ERU effective January 1st, 2020, as described in section five of the ordinance number 3707 of 2012.
Motion, please.
No move.
Second. Discussion, Andy, or Gary?
The, the resolution is pretty much says this, is just setting the rate pursuant to the original ordinance. So, maintain the rate at $90 per ERU.
Any questions from counsel? Roll call.
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Botaglia.
Aye.
Angela Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye.
Resolution acknowledging R. Charles Thomas for his service on the zoning hearing.
Resolved by the council of the city of Needville that whereas R. Charles Thomas was appointed to the city of Needville zoning hearing board on April 13th, 1971, and continued service on that board for more than 48 years, many of those years as its chairman. And whereas he consistently and professionally presided over hearings to ensure all present were heard and their positions considered. And whereas Mr. Thomas served with honor and integrity and humor, often using his dry wit to elicit laughter even while discussing the exceedingly drier topic of zoning. And whereas one example of that included implying a favorable vote in exchange for some Arby's coupons. And whereas another example of that wit was suggesting the Crawford Area Transportation Authority's buses could be cleaned more often. And whereas his humor, calm demeanor, and surpassing integrity helped make the zoning hearings nearly tolerable to applicants and board members alike. And whereas his service on the board began before 47 current city employees were born. And whereas Mr. Thomas performed all the duties of his appointment with dedication, thoughtfulness, and efficiency. And whereas Mr. Thomas has elected to resign his appointment with the zoning hearing board city effective November 7th, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Needville that zoning hearing board chairman, R. Charles Thomas, is hereby commended for his many years of dedicated service to this community and its. for his many years of dedicated service to this community and its citizens. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Meadville, that the best wishes of the city are extended to Mr. Thomas for every success in the future.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Nancy, you've known him the longest, I guess, but you-
I can't say enough about Mr. Thomas. He's just an amazing man. He's always thought about the city and the people of Crawford County above all else. He served well, and I don't think anybody can surpass him. He's amazing.
Sean, any comment?
Really great guy. I mean, I heard to put into work all the things you want to say about him, but he's been around a long time and involved in a lot of stuff. And a really good lawyer.
Sean?
He's been a dedicated citizen. We need a lot more like that.
I've had an opportunity to know him a long time also, and you pretty much nailed it when you did the resolution, because I remember him talking about the catobuses. I think they're much cleaner now. But certainly wish him good health. I hope he spends more time with his wife and they get to travel a little bit if he can.
Your Honor, if I could share a memory, I was just early in my career when the junior high was being redeveloped by Mr. Kennedy, Tom Kennedy, and I think it required a variance for parking was one of them. It might have been multiple variances. And I was with Mr. Kennedy, I was with the redevelopment authority at the time, and we had developed the project. And Mr. Thomas went through about 30,000 reasons why this could possibly approve, shouldn't be approved, because of the conditions. Tom was, I mean, the project was hanging in the balance. Tom was very nervous and getting excited, like, just wait for it, wait for it. And then Mr. Charles so moved.
I remember being at that meeting.
Obviously, there's some, you know, there's, and so, community-minded, right, in terms of taking seriously his position as a zoning hearing board member and considering all sides. It was enjoyable to watch and learn from him.
Gary, you worked with him quite a bit. Do you have any comment?
He's forgotten more about zoning now every now and then. Actually, I don't know if he's actually forgotten it. I mean, he's just, he's always there, and he would say, I'm sitting right next to him, and he gets, he's gotten really quiet in recent years. So if you're not sitting right next to him, you might not hear everything he says, but he'll make these dry comments, and I'll just be cracking up over here, and Rob will be cracking up over here, and we'll just, we'll hear it and everyone else won't, but it's, he's always, he's always saying something. It's just, he's a fun guy to be around.
Gary, anything you'd like to say?
He's an outstanding attorney. In 48 years on the zoning hearing board, it's incredible.
Well, we thank him for his service, and we wish him the very best. Roll call.
Reva?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Angela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
We have another resolution recognizing Deputy Mayor Nancy Angela Bitner's service.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas Nancy Angela Bitner was first elected to Meadville City Council on January 4, 2010, and served through January 6, 2014, and whereas Council Member Angela Bitner was elected to an additional four-year term on council beginning January 4, 2016, and which will conclude on January 6, 2020. And whereas during her tenure, Council Member Angela Bitner was appointed to serve as deputy mayor on January 2, 2018, and served as a redevelopment authority liaison, as well as on the tax-exempt gift subcommittee, finance subcommittee, and as an alternate to the French Creek Council of Governments. And whereas Council Member Angela Bitner has always placed the best interest of the city before all else, and worked diligently to make the city a safe and beautiful place to live, work, and raise a family. And whereas Council Member Angela Bitner is hereby commended for her dedicated service to the City of Meadville. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council, on behalf of the city staff and the citizens of Meadville, extend to outgoing Council Member Nancy Angela Bitner their thanks and gratitude for her service and wish her well in all future endeavors.
So moved. Second. I will second that. Discussion. Jim?
I've known Nancy longer than anybody. You won't say how long that is, though. And I'm going to miss her service. I'll probably make some comments at the end of the meeting.
Sean?
What can you say? She works harder than any of us. It's been a pleasure all these years.
I'm going to miss her dedication to keeping the taxes low.
I agree with you on that. You work very hard to keep the taxes low in the City of Meadville.
I appreciate it, too.
And you always had the city at heart, doing a lot of things for the city that people don't realize, and I'm going to save the rest for later. So roll call, please.
Reva?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Angela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Well, maybe we'll do it right this one.
Sue me.
Okay, we have another resolution recognizing Council Member John Bataglia's services.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas John Bataglia was first appointed to fill a vacancy on Meadville City Council on September 22, 2010, and served through January 3, 2012, and whereas Council Member Bataglia was elected to an additional four-year term and served on council January 3, 2012 through January 4, 2016, and whereas Council Member Bataglia was elected for a second four-year term, which commenced on January 4, 2016, and will conclude on January 6, 2020. And whereas during his tenure, Council Member Bataglia chaired the Board of Health and was appointed to the Recreation Subcommittee. And whereas Council Member Bataglia has worked diligently to keep the best interest of the citizens first and foremost, and perform the duties of his office with dedication and thoughtfulness. And whereas Council Member Bataglia is hereby commended for his dedicated service to the City of Meadville. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council, on behalf of the city staff and the citizens of Meadville, extend to outgoing Council Member John Bataglia their thanks and gratitude for his service and wish him well in his future endeavors.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Sean, I'll start at your end.
I'm going to miss John. He's been a lot of help for me over the years, teaching me all these things, and I'm sure that I will see him a lot in the future, so.
Jim?
Well, I'll have some comments later. It was a good experience working with you, John. Didn't always know where you were coming from on an issue, but you always provided us with a solid background on construction costs and the impact of excessive regulations on the development of our landlocked property. So, I thank you for your service.
John, thanks for your service.
Been a pleasure.
Boy, 2010. 2010, when you first come on.
Yeah, it's a long time.
It is, and-
Almost half as long as your tenure.
Appreciate everything you've done for the city, especially when, I echo what Jim has said when it comes to construction and giving us input on zoning and a lot of different things. So, we thank you for that, and I just wish you well and enjoy the grandkids and take some time.
I didn't expect you guys, I didn't think you guys were going to do this. It surprised me until I got to this part of the meeting, but thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Been my privilege.
Roll call.
Reva?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Angela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Councilmember's statements. Sean, I'll start with you this evening.
I don't know. I like my basketball games. I play cash on Saturday. Meadville does have a very good team here in Lakeview, our star center that moved on to Slippery Rock. Armani Foster is doing terrific at IUP, and it's about, have a few holidays. Be careful, it's getting bad out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's already there.
I'm going to take a few minutes, if that's okay. Well, this is the last time this council's going to meet to discuss any real issues. Our meeting January 6 is largely ceremonial, just tying up a few loose ends. So I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about a couple items. This has been a great council. It's a bipartisan council. Actually, it's more like a nonpartisan council. And the best part about that is that the interests of the people are best served without any consideration of political affiliation. It's been an honor and a privilege to work with this current council. I'm saddened that two of our members are going to be leaving us. Even though we have different viewpoints, we found common ground on a lot of issues. And when we didn't have some common ground, we negotiated the finer points, which resulted in a resolution that was unanimously supported, and those are resolutions which would benefit the greatest number of people. And after all, that's what we're supposed to be doing. John, I gave you some feedback earlier. Like I said, we never knew where you were coming from on the issue. It was a good experience working with you, and you brought a certain amount of reality to the table. I expect to see you building houses for the next 20 years and hopefully adding to the city's tax base because God knows, we need it. Nancy, there's so much to say, and there's not enough time in which to say it. Whenever you need something done, you ask a busy woman to do it. When Meadville was engendered, Nancy volunteered to be council's liaison. Downtown Development, Nancy was front and center. Beautification Committee, Nancy performed her duties with vigor. When the Jimmy Moore Party was in danger of being discontinued, Nancy recruited volunteers, solicited donations, and organized an event which served many of our neediest at the holiday season. Nancy attended every meeting of council. She was always fully prepared to discuss issues and to help formulate astute policies. If there is an error in the financial document, you can be sure Nancy was the one who was going to find it. Sadly, changing the guard is imminent. We appreciate the service of both of you. We're going to miss the two of you. We appreciate your dedication and your selflessness. As a council, we honor the spirit of the council manager form of government, and we always acted as a body, not as individuals. And as a result, we accomplished a great deal. But of all the things this council has accomplished, we never lost sight of one very important fact. If you want to sing and dance to the music, you need to be able to pay for the band. We have our sincerest thanks for your service and best wishes for many happy and productive years to come. And to the public, best wishes for the happiest of holidays of your choice. And don't forget to thank a veteran for guaranteeing your right to have that choice. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you.
Normally, I could last, but I'm going to let you two finish. Again, John, thank you. Your time, effort, hasn't gone unnoticed. And again, I guess the best thing I can wish for you is good health and happiness. Nancy, I don't know what to say, because Jim pretty much covered everything that I can think of, other than I want to thank you for being a friend. And even though we didn't always agree on issues, we were able to find a way to make it neutral. So I appreciate that. And our friendship will last forever. So, John, cheers.
It's almost, not quite 10 years, but it's been my honor and, of course, my privilege to serve two terms and a part of a term. Larry and Autumn, I hope you're as happy coming in here as I'm leaving.
I think that's Harry Truman's quote.
I think it could be.
That's all.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the city for eight years. I'd like to thank city staff. You've lost a lot of employees over the years. Andy, I think you did a terrific job. I think you should be commended. I think you're putting together one hell of a staff. Some of the changes that you've made, the public works, I think you've got one of the best men you could ever get in that position. I've seen a change. People have told me about the change. I appreciate every time a member of the city came to me and asked for something, I was able to turn it over to you, who's the appropriate official to turn it over to, and you took care of it. And so I can't appreciate you enough. The city's fortunate to have you. And I feel the same way about Gary Johnson. Whenever I needed something from you, you always got back to me. You always took care of the city. Debbie Lopowski, the same way. Katie, I've known you a long while, but you always got back to me. The city staff is amazing here, and I just can't say enough about them.
Okay.
As far as council, mayor, I agree with Jim. We did not let politics enter into this. Thank you for always letting me speak my mind. And Jim, love you. You know, it's like having an adding machine next to you. Whenever something's up, he's talking about Meadville, finally. This guy can do stuff in his head. I mean, Meadville is so fortunate to have you on council. It is unbelievable. You have served over decades. I think you were the youngest member ever on city council, and you were brilliant then, and you're brilliant now. And I hope-
I didn't pay for that.
No, you don't have to pay me for this. This is the truth. And Meadville is very fortunate. I would have loved to work four more years with you, and I know that, at least, I hope that the city keeps you on, because Meadville is so lucky to have you. And mayor, you're so committed to the people in the City of Meadville. It's obvious how much you care, and I hope that you stay on also. And I thank everybody for their years of service, for allowing me to serve for you. Thank you.
I'm going to extend this to staff, because you don't normally get to say so much at councilmember's statements. So, Andy, I'm going to start with you.
Yeah, well, I mean, both John and Nancy, thank you for your service. It's a pleasure and honor in my career to work for this council and for you individually. It's clear how much you both care, and I've learned a lot from you both. And I deeply appreciate it. And Nancy, thank you for the remarks of the staff. This is very much appreciated. We have a really hardworking team here, and most days we enjoy what we do and have a good time doing it. So, thank you both.
Gary?
Again, yeah, thanks for the comments. It's always been good to work with you. It's been no crass, if there's ever any issues, you always take care of it. And Councilman Bataglia, I guess we'll be seeing you at the planning and zoning commission meetings coming up, so you're not going to be a stranger. Thank you.
I just want to wish you both the, you know, the best, and it's been a learning experience for me, and I've learned a lot, and I do appreciate that, and I hope I wish you well.
Katie?
I've only had you a brief time, but it's been a pleasure working with you.
One more. Gary?
Thanks for your vote nine years ago.
Oh, yeah, that was my first vote.
We came out at the same time.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. And you both brought a lot of knowledge and passion to the table. Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.
Yes. With that, Merry Christmas to everyone. Have a safe, happy holiday. And motion to, wait a minute, before I forget.
Brief executive session regarding-
Real brief?
Regarding real estate.
Real brief. We're going to go into an executive session, but we're going to wish everybody a happy, Merry Christmas, not a Happy Christmas, but a Happy New Year and a healthy one. And with that, roll call to adjourn. Motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
Roll call.
Reva?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Angela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?